Go ahead and call me in order, start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. Next I have is the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is approval of minutes of August 2nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 2nd.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now I have is approval of claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve this week's claims for payment.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number six is a resolution to approve the Region Six Housing Trust Fund, Hardin County's required cash contribution. Marty?
Good morning Marty.
Good morning. So we make an annual request to Hardin County as well as the other three counties for financial support for the Region Six Housing Trust Fund. Annual application to Iowa Finance Authority requires a 25% local cash match. Historically, we appreciate Hardin County's support to allow us to continue this good program in Hardin County. Over the last four years, the program has invested $300,000 into improving houses across the county. And we've spent about $214,000 in Howell Falls, $55,000 in Holden, about $11,000 in Ackley, $7,000 in Union, and $13,000 in Hubbard. Our applications are accepted on continual basis, sometimes we have a waiting list, right now our waiting list is pretty short. But I guess if somebody gets an application in to us now, we could potentially assist them next summer.
How would you explain they get that application?
Applications are available online at region6planning.org and click on Housing Trust Fund. I do have some brochures I can leave with you today. I was just down in Patrick County Monday for the same purpose. And the county there, we're going to do kind of a press release to try to get the information out about the program. I wondered if you guys wanted to do something similar as well to have a press release out to media outlets just saying funds are available. And Hardin County encourages people to submit applications.
Yeah, that would be great.
So I'll send something out to Nancy and see if you have any comments on it and then we can get it published.
Okay.
I'd like to hear, you know, if we do that, like some success stories, you know, I don't want to call anybody out, but if you can give an example, you know, something in the press, in a press release, you know, that feel good.
Sure, yeah, we could do a before, after picture or something.
Perfect, yeah. A lot of people just want to see the resolution of what the end result is, whether their tax dollars going for it, so I'd appreciate that.
And I guess the per capita split is about $70,000 or so between the state money and the match for Hardin County. And over the last four years, we've been about $75,000 here for Hardin County. The amount differs a little bit by year, in '17, we spent about $129,000 here in Hardin County. In '16, it was about $70,000. '15, it was $62,000. '40,000 in '14. So we try to do different things to equalize the funding per capita over time, so there's no equity issues. It is an income-based program, so it's based on family size, so a family of one, income allowance about $39,000. Family of four, income allowance about $56,000. So it is strictly for owner-occupied housing, so it's not for rentals or anything like that. We have done several rental projects, like at Ackley Housing, they're a bit on the roofs. So if there is a kind of a community-centered rental project, you know, again, we can get involved in this as well. Most of our projects are exterior housing improvements, so we're talking roofs, siding, windows, most of the time around pretty tough shape when they come into the project. And it's pretty visible afterwards, so I'm looking at improvement also. Guess without the Hardin County's support, you know, there's no way we could deliver this program in Hardin County and make a difference out of it.
So by improving like windows, doors, siding, and stuff like that, where, you know, the trickle-down effect, we're helping people with energy efficiency issues and those energy costs that might be, you know, hurt financially?
A lot of our projects, you know, partner somewhat with MICA. I guess they can't come in an SLS and do furnaces without having a solid roof on the house. So again, I guess get them a solid roof. A lot of our houses too visually look pretty tough, you know, with paint issues. So again, if we put on the siding, it's a pretty visible difference. Drive down the road, so it makes the communities look better and makes the county look better.
Sounds good, thank you.
So you're estimating $70,000 would be our match?
Well, the match, I think, is $15,758.
Oh gosh, I got it right here, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, I would make a motion to approve the resol-, or yes, to approve the resolution to approve the, or for the Region Six Housing Trust Fund. The Hardin County required cash contribution of $15,758. The state grant and the amount of $54,016.
I'll second that motion.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? The state grant and the amount of $54 were just approved in the $15,758.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you Marty.
Thanks Marty.
Next I have is a change of status in the Sheriff's Department.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Harley Lynn Shook. Hired as a permanent part-time correctional officer with date of August 9th, 2017.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, sorry.
Motion carries. Next is item number eight, which is the Recorder's Monthly Report totaling $23,064.25.
I'll make a motion to approve the Recorder's Monthly Report of fees collected for the month of July.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next I have is IRVM Equipment.
In a conversation with Megan, the spray truck that you have, you had, we had taken that down to Des Moines Sprayer Specialties to have that, the sprayer equipment fixed so that it would be usable. And then I got an email, or we got an email from Daryl, just regarding that same truck. And I guess you didn't know the ownership of it, and I didn't know the ownership of it, I don't know if any of us really know who owned what. But anyway, Daryl was also asking for that, to be able to get that truck, he said Rhodes purchased that truck, which we did not know that.
Rhodes purchased it.
And he'd like to strip the spray equipment off and use the truck as a flatbed, and then he'd only need one pickup. And he's included a claim for the vehicle purchased to show that he had paid for it. So then that would leave, leave the IRVM Department without a spray truck at all.
Currently you have two sprayers and pickups, right?
We have, so when I started, I was told we had three trailers, I did not know two of them had sprayers on them. So we're using that currently just for new complaints. And it's, you have to stand in the back of the truck for the entire time that you're spraying, so it's just, it's not comfortable. And you hit a bump and they'll fly in, and there's a rail.
Through the long process of this, back when IRVM was with Conservation, Daryl saw this on a, on a site, and he purchased it trying to help out the Conservation Department. And when you, you weren't-
Actually, we went back to Daryl's when he purchased the truck.
Yes.
But when we, when we had it, we had the trailers with the two pickups, and that's what we were doing.
So, so the intent was eventually it would end up in IRVM, when he purchased it, he was hoping IRVM would have reimbursed him for the truck. But then when we moved IRVM into Daryl's department, there's no reimbursement, he already has the department. So the question is, later down the road with a pickup truck, and for the secondary roads, he's looking at two pickup trucks, does he have to buy a pickup truck? He already has a truck, or can he be reimbursed for this truck, and then he'll purchase his next two, I believe is what he's asking. Is it, do you want the truck, I guess is the question.
Well, are, are we getting, I guess it depends if we're budgeting for that new sprayer like plan, then I could just keep what we have for now and wait till we get the new one, because it'll have GPS on it.
How much spraying do you have left, Megan?
At this point with what we have, I'm focusing on like sight distance first and weed complaints.
Okay.
And we have, so far we've got maybe half of the Providence Township sprayed for brush.
Okay.
And we're still trying to plug away at that, but I also have other duties that I have to do as well.
Right, the, when you say we're budgeting for, you're looking into the 2018 budget, right?
Right.
So it wouldn't even come till July, so you'd have all next spring that you'd need to spray also.
We would just use the two-
Trailer sprayers?
Right, and well, because there's only three of us, only two of us can go spray. And so the other person, I've been having like mow, like when we notice sight distance stuff for trees or that are hanging over, I have them go mow that way, the three of us are out. But with such little staff, I can't, there's not much I can get done with three people.
In the current budget, could you afford to buy that truck and use that truck as well? You already told me that the sprayer unit's not very comfortable. It's, to me, it was never safe, that's why we wanted to get rid of them. Standing out in the open air on the back of a trailer was never safe, that's why we were pushing for the trucks earlier.
And I have a question there, Daryl, you have a spray truck for calcium chloride, right? And you, did you pay to put all that equipment, the spray equipment on that then?
The spray, but I don't know about the head, I don't have any of that. I know when we took it to Fort Dodge, that came when we had the tank and all the spray equipment, that was all paid out of the IRVM budget, but we had it in the tank.
The, the current calcium chloride truck?
Yes.
What did that?
The equipment, not the truck, just the, just the stuff that Ford-
And what, how much was that then, do you have an estimate?
It was twenty-some.
So that could almost be an even, counted as an even trade, I mean if they, what did you say, you paid for the truck?
I bought a tandem to put a new spray, calcium spray tank on it.
But you guys had to do a lot of work to that truck before we even got it, I mean you had to pay a lot of money to, to manufacture it.
No, we just, it was an old, the box was shot.
Is that the one that we got from another county?
No, that's, that's a pickup. The first truck was a single axle manual, no air conditioning. And that was the issue, was that there was no air conditioning when you could spray, because the air conditioning was out. So I came across the county engineer's website that Crawford County had a spray truck for sale for $22,000. So I bought it for $20.
So you bought, bought the truck and then IRVM put the sprayer on it?
No, different truck.
No, different, it was all set up.
Okay.
The pickup was all ready to go.
The current pickup with a sprayer on it.
The tandem is what had all the equipment on it for the-
The single axle.
Right, the single axle.
Because now there's a tandem that I purchased, you know. And had the guys tear off the box and all the, there's no equipment, because it's automatic and it has air conditioning.
Which is what was needed.
Yeah, 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 that calcium chloride, sorry. So that's what I planned on doing, the tandem was making it the calcium truck.
With the sprayer unit that's on the tandem right now, IRVM-
There is one on the tandem.
The old one, the old tandem.
That's a single.
Single axle, okay.
There's a single axle, that was first, the pickup was second, and the tandem was third.
Okay, so the-
Pictures of you.
The single axle has a sprayer unit on it right now that IRVM paid for.
I believe so.
And that's the unit you're going to put to use calcium on the tandem, correct? Oh, okay.
It's all rusted out. There's a head on the front that has like all the different nozzles, I don't need that, I just, we built a spray bar in the back for spraying calcium.
Okay.
Well, I guess it comes down to we, like the discussion of what are we going to do with this?
I think if we're going to do the spray truck, the pickup, the spray pickup, we either have to reimburse secondary roads for the pickup from the IRVM, or give the pickup, let the pickup stay with the IRVM, or let the pickup stay with secondary roads, and then in line item number 11, you were saying you don't need a second pickup, you only need a first one.
Well, I was just saying, if that's how you want to do it, I didn't know if you were buying a new spray truck or whatever.
We need to.
There was a lot of hearsay.
Well, we need to, but we, it's not budgeted this year is the problem.
So.
And it's going to be four months bef-, would you say four months before that would even be?
Because it'll get, wherever we purchase it from, it gets drop shipped to Washington, they put it together there and it takes about four months before we get it.
So, I mean, if, if you don't have any spray truck.
We would just be using the full lines.
Yeah, which is not safe, I don't feel. So I think we needed to have the discussion of what we should be doing here for. And I know the-
At one time you talked about once you get a new spray truck, that you'd run both trucks in the spring?
If I had enough staff.
So you could utilize the truck even if you purchased it today?
I could, so if I, if I purchased it back, it would have to stay at Sprayer Specialties, it'd be already done. But it, and it won't have, from what they were telling me, they can't do the multiple heads, so it'll be a single boom, and then they can give the nozzle head, it'll be like a 20-foot swath. So it won't, it won't cover as much as the current one, or like the one that would be purchasing would cover. But if I had enough staff, I could divide and conquer. And that would, that would be too, if-
Which, which you're in the same token, you'd have to have the staff, if you had two pull behind you, it's a four-person operation.
Yeah, and that's, and that's only one of the many IRVM duties, so.
Yeah.
Is the money in the IRVM budget to purchase the truck? I, I remember we put something in to purchase the truck.
There was, there was a line item budget for a new spray truck, and I believe there would be enough for it.
Would that be the best fix? For everybody, I mean, you got to tell me if-
But, I mean, I don't know, is that going to leave enough budget, in your budget to?
That's, that's what I would have to look at.
I mean, it's either put, she'd either have to pay $20,000 to Daryl to buy that truck, and then put $6,000 in it, which is not going to get it-
What's your sprayer stuff?
Totally fixed.
I'm not telling you that you have to-
No, I know, I know, no, I'm just saying, this is an option. Or we maybe just bite the bullet and order the new truck, and in the meantime, she uses the sprayer trailers.
And just concentrate on nuisance things, and reduce the risk.
And then she would have that new truck hopefully by spring. I mean, that's the options, I'm just giving the options.
I mean, I, the, the health and safety aspect concern me the most, and so if it's a, going out and being bumped around and thrown out of the back of a brush truck, I really don't look very highly on that. But if there was intersections and areas that need nuisance spraying and cutting, I would say go out and do those as stationary as you can, and reduce the risk to, you know, health and life safety. And then, you know, go ahead and get that truck back to Daryl if he can utilize it for his, what he's looking for. And then get that ball rolling on the new spray truck, so it could be delivered, you know, early next spring.
So I guess that's our options.
Which we'd have to find funding for.
But the money's there, I think, for the chassis, just not for this new spray equipment, so we're not on the hook for all of it, it's a portion.
Yeah, I believe when I, when I looked at it for the spray rig and the truck together, I think it was like just around $110,000. And I think there was like 70, sort of 73 or 78,000 budgeted for a truck.
Okay, and when we originally did that, you already purchased the truck to put the new sprayer on it, correct? Is that what I remember?
Tandem?
I remember, yeah, tandem. Okay. Well, I don't know. Personally, I think you're going to want to run two trucks in the spring. If that's the case, you'd want to buy this one and still move forward with the other one. Because if you want to do it in a timely manner, like you're saying, you're going to want it for two trucks. Otherwise, you're saying, we're going to buy a new truck, and we're still going to be doing a pull behind with a guy on the back.
Right.
And I don't like that option.
I don't either.
Or you just focus on a new truck and do it all with one truck.
Or as much as we can, you know, we're playing catch-up at this point, and we've acknowledged that. And now I, I believe that, you know, we're going to have to make the best with what we're given, both departments and-
And the hard, the hard part about this is, it isn't an easy shuffle, the truck was purchased with the DOT funding, correct? Through, through secondary roads.
You have to be specific, because there's lots of trucks.
The, the current red pickup sprayer was purchased through DOT funding.
Is that the one that said Sprayer Specialties? Okay.
Yeah.
The code says that you'd have to spend for secondary, I'm not telling you that you have to give any money back, I'm just advising you of what the rules are.
Yep.
But it's the same with IRVM money and the sprayer equipment, so.
Does the code say that?
I guess I understood.
The code says the secondary road, these days in secondary roads, and it lists specifically what you can spend it on.
I guess, I don't know, I always understood that IRVM money went for IRVM, but I guess I don't-
I don't read the code on that, but who knows?
So it's, it's a, it's either a transfer, or it's not a transfer, is what I see. And he's telling us we can transfer it at zero, but I would frown upon that if it's spent with DOT money.
Right.
I want to keep, I want to reimburse the department. But I would like it to continue going forward, I don't want the guys riding on back.
No.
I don't either.
It's okay if you're just doing a quick spot intersection, and you're climbing out, you're spraying, I understand that, but I just don't like the guys riding, what do you think on that?
I don't like it either, but that was my only choice.
Right.
I had to do it, and, you know, weed complaints always come first, so I had to get that complaint done. The complaint and sight distance issues are the two top things that IRVM focuses on the most, is safety in the roadside, making sure the public's happy with their lives.
So could we get an estimate of what the vehicle is worth today? To be purchased, IRVM to secondary roads, and then that pickup, then Rhodes gets reimbursed back, you have a sprayer. Back in a pickup with a sprayer that you could use as a secondary one, once the new one comes, which could be another year away.
And so are you wanting me, so if we purchase it, do you want me to have sprayers, where she's going ahead and fix it?
Yes.
Yes. I think so, yes.
Yeah, it's your truck then.
Yeah.
And the money's in the budget to purchase it.
I would have to look, but I believe it is because of that one line item being a truck purchase.
I mean, and if that's the route we're going to go.
That would work for secondary roads as well, you just need pickups, right?
Yeah.
I mean, the bids that you've got.
You can buy this one.
I know, but coming up, you got two pickups.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you can continue moving forward on that as well.
I mean, we can keep driving what we have, I know that it's killing us in maintenance.
I've seen some of the stuff you drove, we made you park it.
Okay.
And I think, I mean, if that's the route we'd want to go.
Is that a route you'd like to see, Megan?
Yeah, it would, it would be easier.
Okay.
And then maybe we can just meet with Megan.
Okay, so Megan, figure out what that truck's worth, and then we'll get the funds shifted from IVR on budget over to secondary roads to, for the reimbursement, and the documentation taken care of. And then, and then Megan, if you want to continue the pursuit of the new chassis and spray equipment, get that moving, and see if you can find the estimated delivery date on the new equipment, and meet with us again and Jessica to figure out how we budget that, I would appreciate that.
And I do have the estimates for the trucks and the spray rig.
Okay.
So it would just be a matter of me calling the KD at North Star to find out when we have it in that date.
I will mention, let's use local dealers, they can, they can provide-
KD's the guy with the spray rig.
But with the pickups?
Yeah.
Yeah, you go through the local dealers.
So I, I did, I actually called around, and they don't, the problem is for that sprayer to need a fleet truck, and there's not very many dealerships in this area that actually work with fleet trucks. So the only one I found was in Waterloo, and it's a Dodge dealership, and then the other one was Ames, and then those ones were delivered. So that, that was the other issue, is I had to make sure that they sold fleet trucks, and a lot of them here told me they did not.
Okay. Any other questions, I know Wes, you might have some equipment, we're just trying to get the equipment gathered around.
We can get together with and go through. Did anybody ever, did anyone file for it?
No, this is what I have, the only thing, and I know like there's something mentioned from LRTF grants, so I went online and looked, and we can see what was purchased from, I think, from 1990 up until present day. One of them was in 2012 for $1,300, there was a GPS slash GIS unit, but I don't know if that's, I don't know if that just didn't- I don't know if that was software, yeah, I don't know if it was software.
It's what I think it was, it was just a little, how much did it expect?
It said it was $1,359.
That might be software and a little piece of hardware.
Okay.
Like a hand-held kind of thing, if the memory chart was planned, I think that's what it was.
I have not found that.
I think that's in my office.
Okay.
For what you want to do though, it'll-
Okay, I didn't know what it was.
Yeah, in fact, no one's really using it, it's the software that comes with it, we don't really use anymore.
Okay, I just wasn't sure, because like I didn't, I didn't see this item, and I was the only one that wasn't accounted for.
But every two years, I have like, where's the next one?
Secondary roads paid for a new floor, a new drainage, and everything in that building. That floor was tore out, because it didn't rain, the center, that was all done in West Bay. And we built those offices in there, and we, I couldn't find anything, Wes, if we paid for that concrete, we've got our conservation office.
Yeah, I have to, I haven't had time to get through the files and dig through stuff.
See, we can only look at our fund, but Angela can't look at anything else, I don't, I'm just not finding it. That, me and you told me, I gave you the hard records, yeah, and I didn't find it, so that's probably not us.
Well, we need a list of all those dollars to figure out how that building will be dispersed. If the entire thing, if we keep part of it, we, I don't have the answer right now.
Thing is, I think they're going to, well, once we get all the equipment shuffled around, I mean, if it's their sprayers and stuff, it would make more sense to have everything IRVM in the IRVM building, so we'll have to figure out that logistics stuff later, yeah.
Cost. Okay, if you can get a list of all the costs and everything that the secondary roads is made for.
It's hard to find this stuff.
Okay.
So there is a different building then, IRVM's going to be paying for?
Well, it's always been called the IRVM building. Well, it's always been called the IRVM building, but.
There was some updating, it sounded like there was some updating done out here. It came with conservation and it was, we had to do some work with those kind of, what really had, even to come be.
Which, you know, is, she's working on getting done now because there's things, I mean, the storage is not safe out there either.
Yeah, it's supposed to arrive next week.
That's what I, I got your email on that, that's good.
Any others?
We're storing some stuff at our garage because that West Bay really, we, only Joe parks his pickup in there.
West Bay of?
At the office, we have that shed, you know.
The IRVM office?
No.
Yours?
His office.
Okay, okay. Oh, the garage behind there.
Kind of that garage.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I get it.
We have our lab in there and Joe, but I think it was stored, we just, we have to put the mulch and stuff in there.
Okay.
All right, well.
The building itself, currently you're in the old IRVM building. That's the one you were talking about, you did the updates to the concrete on Wash Bay. Is that the building we're going to keep residing this out of?
I don't know that there's a choice. I don't know.
I think so.
See, we used, we used some of that storage.
That used, that used to be half and half, if I remember.
So, yeah, and I, Jody didn't, I asked Jody about it, it's on break period and he doesn't remember. I don't. Angela's been looking at it, you know, a lot of time.
Okay. Well, let's see what we can get put together and get dollar amounts that way. We're not, not using DOT money for IRVM, making sure we separate the costs if we can. Or secondary roads money, I call it DOT, I'm sorry. Secondary roads, let's get it divided out to the best that we can and see where we come out. Any other questions? Is that what you guys feel?
So I think you know where to go from here then, Megan?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
And then also you might want to talk to both these two and see where, if there's any other equipment that's out there.
I, we just have the two sprayers and that's it out in the lot and that flatbed that Cory just bought, I think that was for the Ford.
So I, I, like I said, I haven't had time to get into files that I have, see what's for.
Well, I did get a copy of the equipment that's on our inland marine insurance. Did I get that, did I give that to you? Okay. I think I emailed that to you. So, I mean, I think what's probably on here is probably what, what there is.
Yeah, I was just going to sit down and go through that and see.
Yeah.
I know some stuff like, there was an old air compressor, there was that Eager Beaver chipper.
Actually, I found that was secondary roads.
That was secondary, okay. Because I know some like that air compressor, that stuff went on the county auction because it was almost, it was really old, it was almost a safety hazard. So some of that stuff did get sold off and then some of those equipment was older furniture and stuff, it was a cold hack, like I said.
Well, because.
There was a combine too. That went to the farm.
Because I got the old list from 1314 and maybe you can go through that and tell them, tell us where, I mean, there's a few things that are not with us any longer, probably anywhere. Because they're old, so, okay.
Any other questions? From there, I will move to item number 10, which is utility permits. Secondary roads. I don't have a utility permit. What do you got for roads? Shoulderling, shouldering done?
Yep. And they're thinking about pouring the deck next week on Billy Lawless's bridge. So construction season will be right along.
Do we have any more asphalt projects this fall yet?
Yeah, we need to.
And then that's it? I couldn't remember.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're working on the plans for S-56 to go back.
Yeah, that road's pretty bad.
But we're having so many problems, I think we're going to have to push you back five years.
I heard 10.
I've already been holding on for five years.
Um, next I have is item 11, which is pickup truck bids for secondary roads. You addressed one thing to me that you didn't get the same quote for each.
Right, I sent an email to the board saying that when we look over the two bids, the letter that we sent out, we were requesting two supercabs and.
A supercab is a cab and a half?
Yeah, I call extended cab, I guess that. A supercrew looks like there's four actual doors. They all look alike. And that's what Dale Howard bid. They bid a supercrew with a five and a half foot box, whereas the supercab would have a six and a half foot box, but they came in cheaper, which a four door is cheaper than extended cab.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Anyway, so you have one bidder that followed the rules, you had one that didn't follow it, but yet you have a cheaper price. Whatever the board feels comfortable with.
Could we?
Whatever you want.
Could we reject, rebid for quotes on both?
Sure.
Yeah, that's, that's my thought.
Two of them already know the opposite, for both options. The four door and the supercab. That way we get both quotes from both entities and then we can look at the lowest bid. Otherwise.
If you're going to look at a supercab, I'd just say this, they followed.
I'm, I'm more inclined to whatever the request for proposal was, whoever followed the bid, let's go with rewarding good behavior and, and following the specifications of the bid.
But do you?
I can see throwing the bids out now that you know that a supercrew is cheaper to say, just the supercrews instead and rebid everything, but.
Which, which do you prefer?
They follow the rules now.
Yeah.
People are showing their hands already.
Right.
And that's why you have a bidding process.
Do you have a preference of one over the other, the type or style?
Is the box an issue?
Not for us because it would be for the office, the, not the maintenance guys, so that's not critical for us.
But eventually would it go to the maintenance guys?
Yeah, if, when its life is.
Like the one out here.
The current, the current one at the office is being used as going to the maintenance guys, right? And that person be re, getting replaced?
I don't know that it'll go anywhere.
Okay.
Maybe to an auction.
Yeah, it's rough.
I was talking to Rick.
There's a point where you just have to say, we really can't do this anymore.
Right.
Especially when you start fixing them all the time.
Well, and, I mean, I think if you don't have a preference and you find out the other one is cheaper, I'd agree with what you said Lance, maybe just.
Reject and bid both back?
Yeah.
I, I agree.
So you're rejecting all bids and then you want us to send out the request for bids for the supercrew and the supercab?
And, and I agree with BJ, the one that was submitted was done correctly. But as a taxpayer, I think I would rather pay for the cheaper one.
Yeah.
If it's cheaper to buy a four door versus an extended cab, I would rather it be known that we're buying the lesser dollar one, but I want both entities the opportunity to bid on that.
Yeah.
So, but I still want both entities to be able to bid on the extended cab too. They might find out that the other bid was lower on the extended cab. I, I understand both people have already showed their costs, but their offset. That's why I'd like to bid them both back and we can go with the lower bid on, out of all four options.
I agree.
Over the board directs me.
I'll make a motion to reject both bids and have Daryl ask both bidders to rebid